Good morning, sir.
Glad to have you all here today. I'd like to welcome you all to the Friday, July 18, 2025, meeting of Denton County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I would like to welcome Commissioner Falconer. He is going to lead us in our invocation and our pledges of allegiance, led by our Boy Scouts. So if you'll please stand.
So thank you all for being here today. I just want to quickly start with a verse from Ephesians 2:10. And it says that, "For we are God's workmanship, created in Christ Jesus, prepared to do God's work, good works in advance for Him to do in us." So with us, let's pray. God, thank you so much for being the great and awesome God that you are. And we do know that we are made in your image and that you have prepared works, good works, for us to do. And we thank you for giving us that opportunity. Lord, we thank you for those who are here today, these young people who are already doing those good works. We thank you for that and that they are prepared to continue doing so. And Lord, we just, we want to ask for your guidance and your direction for those of us making decisions today, that we would do all those things in your will and with your wisdom and your guidance. And Lord, we just, we want to also continue to pray for those in central Texas and even now in San Angelo and other areas where people have been lost and so much devastation has occurred. We just pray for those who are continuing, all those first responders and the folks who are there to help, just give them strength and courage, as well as those who are going through that traumatic experience. And Lord, we just lift all these things in your holy and precious name, for it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right, where's our Boy Scouts? Were they going to come up as a group? All right, Scouts, if y'all come on up here, y'all can lead us in our pledges. Megan is going to... Chelsea, okay. If y'all come up as a group? We're so glad to have you all here. Don't they look sharp?
Right there by the mic, guys.
Right there, perfect, perfect. Right there. And if y'all will lead us out on our U.S. and then our Texas, okay? All right, here we go.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Very good. Thank you, guys. And thank you, Commissioner. I do want to remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones. At this time, we'll go to item one, which was for public input for items that are not listed on the agenda. And we have several registered speakers. I would like to remind you all that we do have a three-minute time limit on registered speakers. And then we'll set a timer. All right, we'll go ahead and start with Dan Burnham. Mr. Burnham?
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Yes, sir.
I'm here to speak in favor of the voting centers. I know that I've heard some numbers come out produced that I think are on the low side, stating that approximately 10% of the voters were being turned away from the voting sites. And it's come to my attention that that count came from two or three unofficial counts. And one of those counts was a city election, where we know that you don't get the same turnout, the same kind of turnout in the city as you would presidential or gubernatorial election. So I don't think that that number is very representative. Now, from my, I know you need hard numbers and not personal opinion. However, since the year 2000, Y2K, every two years, I've been involved in working at an election here in Denton County, either as a worker, alternate judge, or judge.
Thank you.
It's every two years, and I have worked suburban, urban sites, Sanger, Carum, South Branch, Carrollton, all over. I witnessed over and over the same problem many times and suspected, but I never did an official count until this last general election. I was the judge at North Branch Library. We had, we processed 596 people, nothing huge, astonishing, very modest amount, but we processed 596 people. We redirected 191 people to other sites to vote. That's almost, that's approximately a quarter, about out of 800 people. We turned 200 people away. Now, I would recommend, highly recommend, to see if we could get some kind of official count as opposed to just going off of Joe Blow here, okay? Because that's not a good official count. But it's serious enough and it happens enough over the county that it really does merit concern. Now, one of the arguments I've heard against the voting centers has to do with the election integrity. Now, election integrity is extremely important, and I do believe in taking all aspects for that. But it almost seemed like they were kind of pointing the finger at the Denton County administration's and at lacking trust in them. Well, we shouldn't really trust anybody. I agree. And perhaps we should have greater oversight on their processes and what their checks and balances are. However, when you're turning away a quarter of your voters, and that's one site, 191 people, that really sets up election integrity issues. That's enough people. If you take that multiple, I know it's happening all over the county. This was not one single selected, isolated, isolated.
Go ahead and finish your sentence, Mr. Burnham.
Yes, sir. That becomes real election integrity that needs to be looked into. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for working the elections. The next is Christie Wood.
Good morning.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
So my name is Christie Wood. I live in Denton, zip code 76201, and I've lived here since 2001. I'm a small business owner. I provide stained glass services to the DFW area and wholesale throughout the United States. I am also an election judge, or alt-judge, and I have been doing that since November 2016. I've served in nine different locations throughout the county, some rural, some urban. But I enjoy going out and doing this. I love working elections. I've done local municipal party primaries, constitutional amendments, I've done runoffs, I've done federal elections, you name it, I've done it. And I love doing both early voting and election day work, so I do it all. I've also served on the Democratic Party election liaison team to help coordinate with the election administration where we're going to place all these different voting locations throughout the county. But for the one issue that I find that causes voter consternation, confusion, and frustration is the fact that we don't have vote centers on election day. The past national election had me serving over at the DISD Stevens Administration Building, which is right in downtown Denton. That's my precinct, 4168. Love working there, love the Stevens Admin Building. However, realize it's between TW and UNT, so the majority of the people in my precinct are students. And they come through, year after year, we get a whole new crop of people coming through. This past November, we had so many redirects, particularly TW students, that's the one I want to focus on, that I had to dedicate one of my clerks just to do crowd control and voter education in the line before they even got inside the building to work on the redirects that. Also, myself and my alt-judge spent eight hours doing nothing but provisional votes there, at that one location, because of the problems with not having a vote center and people being in the wrong place and not being able to go to where they needed to go. The problem was exacerbated due to the fact that TW Hubbard Hall was an early voting center in that election, but it was not an election day location that year. TW staff misdirected all those TW students to my location instead of to the Civic Center, which is where they should have been voting. Sorry about that, so I would like to say...
Go ahead and finish your sentence. Go ahead, ma'am.
Please adopt voting centers because it will help stop this confusion on the voters. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next is Ms. Jane Schultz.
Hello.
Good morning.
Nice to see you all again. My name is Jane Schultz. I live at 9913 Silver Rock Way in Denton, Robeson Ranch, and I'm here to talk about vote centers. Big surprise. First, I want to thank GOP County Chair Melinda Preston for showing up last week, or yeah, I guess it was last week, and speaking out about her opposition to countywide election day voting. For four years, the former leader of the Denton GOP has blocked vote centers, as you know, while refusing to talk publicly about it. As a result, that allowed all kinds of weird conspiracy theories to percolate throughout the party, and I've heard a lot of them, all right? Today, I'm going to address two of the reasons that Melinda gave you last week as to why we should not end the voter confusion that the last two speakers have talked about, that frustrates thousands of voters all over the county on every election day. And I'll come back and talk about the rest at future dates. So the first thing that Melinda said when she started her talk was, "Voting centers open the door to corruption," period. And then she moved on, all right? She never said how this might happen. Now, we've had countywide election day voting during early voting for decades here. Early voting in Texas dates back to 1987. We were actually a national leader in that. And today, more than half of county voters cast their ballots that way, okay? So if there is corruption with voting tied to that, I have looked, I cannot find it. All right, she didn't mention a single specific instance of voter fraud or corruption tied to that here or elsewhere in Texas. Sadly, this just leaves a lot of people who don't really understand the system with the vague charge of corruption hanging out there to stoke more fantastic conspiratorial thinking. Now, the second claim that she brought up is that countywide voting allows bad actors to use a ballot cast outside someone's home precinct to identify the voter and reveal their ballot choices. And she cited a, I believe it was a 2024 incident, in which members of her own party allegedly outed the ballot of another Republican in this way. So I want to make two points about that. One, the people responsible for the incident were Republicans who outed the ballot of another Republican in another county, I might add. And now, an official of the same party is arguing that this bad behavior is a good reason to drive 10% to 15% of our own voters crazy trying to figure out where to vote on election day. Now, if that is not circular reasoning, I do not know what is. So I will also say it's likely that more than half of those confused voters are Republican. It's just the math. So here's what she didn't say. This incident did not happen in Denton County, and nothing like it has happened here, at least within the memory of people familiar with our voting system in any recent time. She didn't say that the Texas Secretary of State recently sent out new guidelines for strong measures that local elections officials can use to protect ballot secrecy. And she didn't say that our county election staff knows very well what these rules are and how to use them. And if you don't know that, you should talk to them about the issue themselves. They'll be happy to discuss it with you. No, she tried to leave us with an unsupported claim that there's no way to protect ballot secrecy without a horse and buggy rule that forces us to vote only in our home precincts, a rule that sends thousands of voters, a lot of them from her own party, your own party, racing to find out where to vote on election day. There's a name for this. It's gaslighting. It's an old trick that goes back to those horse and buggy days. Don't fall for it. Thank you.
Judge, I need to just make one point, please. You all have thrown out a lot of numbers, 10% here, 15% there. Tell me how many people who were redirected did not get to vote at all? I think most of them voted at the correct place, so those are the numbers I'd be interested in. Thank you.
When county starts counting now, we'll be happy to report it.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Let's go to, next is Martha Holt. Martha?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Martha Holt, and I live at 2401 West Prairie.
Ma'am, if, Ms. Martha, if you'll please speak in that microphone. You can move it around if you need to. I want to hear it. Thank you for being here. You want to hear what you had to say.
Thank you.
Go right ahead, start over.
I've been an election worker here in Denton as a clerk and an alternate judge since 2018.
Thank you.
And I love working elections. I love getting with the people, greeting their children, giving them stickers, celebrating new voters. That's my thing. I really like people. I was a nurse for 44 years, so people are my thing. And the election office here in Denton is pressing me to be a presiding judge. The one reason I don't do that is because I don't want to spend my whole day filling out provisional ballots. And that's what the judge does. During early voting, he was, and this is early voting, but during voting, a lot, and even the election day voting that I worked this last election cycle, the judge was over at that table all day long filling out provisional ballots, which could eliminate that issue to the most part. There's other reasons they filled out provisional ballots, but this would take care of a lot of that unnecessary paperwork. And that's why I tell them no every year, I'm not going to be a presiding judge, unless that changes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank you for working our elections. Next is Mr. Robert Holt. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Thanks for being here.
Well, I'm happy to be here.
I'm glad you're here.
I'm just glad to be anywhere, actually.
Amen.
My name is Robert Holt, H-O-L-T. I live at 2401 West Prairie here in Denton. And as you all know, that when you vote during early voting, you can vote anywhere in the county. It's called countywide voting and/or vote centers. But this changes on election day. On election day, you must vote in the precinct that your address is assigned. If you try to vote anywhere else on election day, you'll be told you will have to go someplace else to vote, or you will be offered a provisional ballot that will possibly not be counted. These election day voting locations can change from one election to the next and between early voting and election day. Voters receive no notification of any changes in voting locations. As a result, 10% to 15% of Denton County voters who show up on election day are turned away from the first polling place they show up at and redirected to another polling place that may be miles away. Some voters may not be able to get to the new polling place in time to vote. Others may become discouraged and not attempt to vote. This can potentially lead to voters losing confidence in the integrity of the voting system. As someone who has chosen to, quote, "do my part" in the American democratic process and serve as an election poll worker, it's hurtful and it's disappointing for someone who has been redirected to a second or possibly a third polling place to say that we are incompetent and do not know what we're doing. The state of Texas has 254 counties. 99 counties have countywide voting. Now, that doesn't sound all that impressive, 99 out of 254, until you realize that those 99 counties account for over 80% of the total population of the state of Texas. The other 155 counties account for less than 20% of the total population. Of the 50 most populous Texas counties, only four, of the 50 most populous counties in Texas, only four, Denton, Montgomery, Johnson, and Hunt do not have district or countywide voting. Denton is the seventh most populous county in Texas, and it is the largest county without countywide voting. With this petition, we're asking our...
Go ahead and finish your thought.
We're, okay, with this petition, we're asking our elected county commissioners to change the law to allow voters to vote anywhere in Denton County on every election day, just like early voting. Sometimes, you just need to do something simply because it is the right thing to do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Our next one speaker is Mr. David Wiley. Our next one speaker is Mr. David Wiley.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is David Wiley. I reside at 712 Charlin Drive in Argyle, and I serve as a Republican precinct chair in precinct 4198. I also serve as a committee man for Senate District 12 on the Executive Committee of the Republican Party at Texas. But perhaps most importantly, I've served as an election judge for over 30 years, including here in Denton County since 2018. In the Election Integrity Section of the Republican Party platform, Plan 221 calls for the elimination of Election Code Section 4307 that allows for countywide polling places and returning to precinct-only voting for any in-person voting. This enables local election judges to execute fair elections, allowing voters from a nearby area to participate. As an election judge, it's been my pleasure to welcome voters from my Argyle community to our polling place in each election. It's been reported that many people are turned away due to being in the wrong polling place on election day. In my experience, that is the exception rather than the norm. The poll book system in Denton County uses is very good at giving exact, specific directions to any voter that appears to be in the wrong polling place. I have heard that this number is 1 out of 10 people. But again, that's not been my experience. This may occur at some locations, but not at mine. The party has a program to inform voters leading up to election to go vote. And part of what they do when they tell them that is, precinct chair, I tell my voters, we are voting at this location. And they go vote. In the recent municipal election, 25% of the registered voters in Argyle participated and voted in the recent municipal election. We turn out our vote. They get to the right place. I'm certain our elections administration could review their records since it's their computers that print out those instructions for those people who are redirected. And if they're not currently capturing that and be able to give you a metric of precinct by precinct, how many redirects you have, then they could, you know, add something to the system to where they capture that in future elections. That way, you would know how many redirects each place has. Now, of course, it used to be the law that we had to keep track of that, but when we started using electronic systems, they got a waiver, and you don't have to keep track of it anymore. But there are many other points that I'd love to talk about. I'm going to respect your time, and I may just be back. I thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you. Next is Joel McGregor.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Joel McGregor, 89, 21. He's Sam Lee Lane, precinct 4217. I'm the precinct chair there, and I've served as election judge for many years in Denton County. Not nearly as many as Dave, because I've only been here since 2013. But I'm not discounting other people's experiences in their precinct, and you guys can look this up if you want to. But I guarantee you, in my experience as election judge, it's been well less than 2% of people get redirected. And I'd say that half a dozen might not have had time because they came in, you know, I mean, over all the years I've done it, may not have had time because they came in at five minutes till seven, and they were in the wrong place. Thing is, it's extremely easy to figure out where to vote. You know, they have an excellent website. You type in your name, you get a sample ballot, you get the voting location. You know, most of the people that came in and had provisional, wanted to vote provisionally because they were in the wrong place. You know, some, there's a few of them that asked for help with filling out their ballot, and, which is one of the things we can do. And they were just guessing on, they didn't know who any of the candidates were. They were just ticking boxes. I mean, they said, I don't know who these people are. I just want to vote. So I'm not sure, you know, but if you look, you can get the provisional ballot, you know where to vote, you know who's on the ballot, so you can look it up. And on election integrity, back before my precinct was split, for years, there were five voters registered at the graveyard, and I turned those in every election cycle, and they were on there the entire time. I don't know if they're still on there or not, but, so cheating does happen. Another thing that hasn't been mentioned is voting centers heavily favor candidates that have the most money. If you have one place that you have to vote for your local candidates especially, that local candidate can be standing there and talk to you out in the parking lot and let you know who they are and what they stand for, so you know who they, and if you don't have money to cover all the polling sites in Denton County, if you have countywide voting centers, you're, you're not going to be able to do that. But I, if I want to be a candidate, I can stand outside my polling place on election day, or even all during early voting. And that's another thing, when I have been on the ballot, I've watched the numbers, and 99% of my voters always vote at that local location anyway. So countywide voting centers wouldn't help them one bit. Provisional ballots been mentioned?
Go ahead and finish your thought.
Generally, in my location, I do one or two provisional ballots because somebody doesn't want to go to another location, and that's maximum. The only time it's been different is when the polling system got messed up for one election cycle, and a lot of people weren't in the poll pad. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Gail Solomon. Gail Solomon? Good. Good morning. Thank you for being here. Feel free to adjust that microphone. Feel free. There you go.
I want to talk to you about the issue over voting centers versus the precinct system that we currently have. So first of all, I live at 201 West Park Street in Little Elm, Texas. I've been working elections for the past, since 2015.
Thank you.
And I love it. I love to do that. But, and many times I've been an election judge, including at our last presidential election, which we had a phenomenal turnout in Little Elm. So I don't turn people away. I would say that with all of that experience, I mean, I've been an election judge in Carrollton, Denton, Farmer, Farmers Branch, I'm not sure if that was Carrollton or Farmers Branch, Lewisville, and Little Elm, you know, several times is what I'm trying to say. I know I have brought a broad range of experience in locations, and I don't turn people down. I don't make, the, the issue, if somebody is redirected, misdirected to the wrong place, I believe that is a PR issue. People need to know what and how and when and where to vote. And the trouble is, is that people are so busy with work, commuting, families, and so on, that we need to tell them where to be a number of times in a number of ways. And we need to elevate that issue in all parties, all precincts, so that nobody had, there's no doubt in anyone's mind where they're supposed to go, especially if there's a redistricting. And I believe that's the bottom line problem with this whole issue, is that we are not doing a good enough job of messaging to the broader public of where to vote, because they may never attend a, you know, any other kind of political thing except to vote. So they need to know that upfront. It used to be on TV, the newspaper, emails, whatever. So that's what I have to say, and I appreciate your time so much.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for working our elections.
Thank you.
We couldn't do it without y'all. It's checked both ways, so I think it says, it's two checks on, I do not wish to speak, but I'll, we'll call her name and see if she wants to speak. Deborah Avellano? Okay. I take it you do want to speak. Okay. Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. I, I'm glad I had the opportunity to speak after all. Thank you so much for your time. I'm a precinct chair. My name is Deborah Avellano, and I am a precinct chair with the Denton County Republican Party, precinct number 2073 in Corinth. By the way, it was Shirley Spellerberg's precinct before, so I come well-trained. At any rate, I am speaking against voting centers. The major reason being that we do want, I don't have the statistics, that's why I debated about speaking or not. Next week, if, if you haven't voted on this, I will come and speak about statistics to verify it. Convenience doesn't equal security or saved money. Voting centers must have internet connections to the election office, and they have become more vulnerable in the VPNs, the virtual private networks have become more vulnerable and can be hacked. So, as I said, I don't have the statistics on that, but I can provide the numbers later for you. I will mail that to you. Hand-marked ballots that we are seeking for each precinct would be needed at each voting center, and that would be an extreme cost for all of the variations for all of the local elections. The major thing that I believe about precinct voting is, we, as precinct chairs, make sure that our people know where to vote. And frankly, the election administration posts the voting centers clearly on voting for early elections as well as for election day. But I make sure in my precinct that I get the word out to my constituents about where to vote each possible time. It's important to keep the security and the integrity, and it's also good to keep the local atmosphere for people to meet the people that they're going to be voting for. I know that as, as Kevin is my commissioner, he can come to Corinth City Hall, and he can be there for a while, and we can cover, people can get to meet him. It's very important that we have that local contact. I am proud to speak for the city of Corinth and for my precinct. Thank you so much for your opportunity.
Thank you so much, Deborah. I appreciate you. All right. Next is Ann Jones. Okay. Wish you not to speak. Okay? Perfect. Let's go to Terry. Sin Does Not Wish To Speak. Does not wish to speak. Okay. But fill out a form. Okay. Good. Thank you. Thank y'all very much for being here. I want to thank you for being involved in the process. This is not a agenda item or an action, and that's why we're doing that under item. One, which is for public input, not listed on the agenda. So maybe you're sitting here, and I want to say this for the, especially the Boy Scouts in the audience, the kids, like you're, why are we not commenting back? It's because we're really not supposed to. So there's, we're listening, we're hearing information, and we will, if it becomes a future agenda item, we will deliberate that in the future. Does that make sense? So I want to thank y'all for your, why are they not saying anything? That's, that's why. All right, let's go to, speaking of Boy Scouts, let's go to Item 3A, which is approval of a resolution recognizing the Fall 2024 and Spring 2025 Denton County BSA Citizenship and the Community Merit Badge Program and any appropriate action. I know we have several of our guests leaving, which is, which is fine, and we'll go ahead and have the Boy Scouts come down. Megan has got her, her program here. Go ahead, Megan.
Okay. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Thank y'all so much for having us today. I'll just talk a little bit about our program, and then I'll let you...
Please.
I want to introduce our Merit Badge counselors. We have Jim McLaren and Bob Clark, who have been really instrumental. My husband, Josh Joblin, also helps, but he is actually on a Boy Scout trip with our son right now, so he's not able to be here.
Very good.
So here today, we have our Fall 2024 and Spring 2025 classes of Scouts who completed our Merit Badge. We had about 15 Scouts actually complete the program, but it's summertime, so everyone's busy, so we're really pleased to have these four here with us today. Our program really focuses on helping the Scouts not only earn this Merit Badge, but with a county focus. They had the opportunity to interview Commissioners Faulkner and Williams, so thank y'all so much for being a part of that. And they really, we really focused on how they can be a productive member of their county community. So we really enjoy hosting this badge. I do also want to add that our signups for our Fall program just opened today, so if anybody is watching or interested in doing that, you can sign up through the county website. And we hope to continue offering this program twice a year moving forward.
Perfect. Well, I will, guys, I'm glad that y'all are here. I want to thank our volunteers and our staff for participating in this, and Commissioner Faulkner and Williams, thank y'all for speaking to the boys and so on. I'm glad you earned this program. It's a meaningful program, I can tell you. As the father of two Eagle Scouts, I can tell you that it's a, Boy Scouts of America is a wonderful, wonderful program. So I'll go ahead and read this resolution, and then we will, we got some certificates here to present to y'all. This is a resolution recognizing the Fall 2024, Spring 2025 Denton County Scouts BSA Citizenship and the Community Merit Badge Program. Whereas the Citizenship and the Community Merit Badge Program, sponsored by the Denton County Office of History and Culture, is for those participating in Scouts BSA from across Denton County who have met three times to learn about citizenship and community in Denton County. Whereas to earn this badge, Scouts mapped out important community locations and services in Denton County, outlined the county government, attended a session of Commissioners' Court, interviewed Commissioner Ryan Williams and Commissioner Kevin Faulkner, gave eight hours of their time to volunteering for nonprofits, and presented a final presentation on citizenship and community in Denton County to Merit Badge counselors. Whereas the following Scouts earned the Citizenship and the Community Merit Badge with the Denton County Office of History and Culture in the Fall 2024, Spring 2025, and that's Rakhil Aluri, Yashish Dewan, Tabenhammer, Navjek Chapapour, Devon Katharavon, Tyler Myers, Viham Pidmesta, William Rickenbot, Emerson Sabolski, Harrison Sabolski, Parth Saw, Sharish Tanetti, Savan Venmanal, Mason Wild, and Kenny Yu. Whereas these Scouts have demonstrated important skills in research, communication, community activism, and public speaking. And now, therefore, be resolved, the Denton County Commissioners' Court does hereby recognize these Denton County Scouts for this accomplishment in completing the Citizenship and the Community Merit Badge with Denton County Office of History and Culture for the Fall of '24 and Spring of '25, done in open court this, the 18th day of July, 2025, upon a motion made by...
Moved up, please.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Faulkner. I guess y'all can vouch for these guys, since y'all met with them and had a great time with them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Well, I do want to thank y'all for being a part of this, and I'm glad this is one of our programs that we have here at the counties to teach these. There's so many different merit badges, over 100, and I'm glad that y'all earned this one. It's important on your way to Eagle. Commissioner Edmondson?
I think it's great what we do here. Are there other counties that do similar programs, or are we kind of just a beacon in the market?
I would say we're probably a trailblazer in this.
Well, I think it's awesome. Thank you all so much for doing this.
I think it's a great one. It's a great one. Guys, do y'all want to, boys, do y'all want to say anything? You don't have to, but do y'all want to say anything about the program? I thought that might be the answer. Okay. All right. Well, I'll say that we're glad to have y'all here in the courthouse. All right. It is great. So, all right, we, go ahead.
Not so quiet usually during, during our time we have.
The sessions.
Yeah. It's actually a lot of fun. You get to hear a lot of young gentlemen from all over the county, which is kind of neat about it. It's not like it's just in one area. And they, volunteers do a wonderful job, and it's fun to speak to these young men, and they have some interesting questions, and so I really enjoy it, and I appreciate the opportunity to be involved. So thank you, and congratulations, gentlemen.
And I echo the same comments. I really enjoy speaking with you guys as a, as a Boy Scout. I think it's, it's such a great, and Dallas County didn't have it when I was a Boy Scout. No.
Did they have Scouts back then?
That was horse and buggy.
Did they have Scouts back then?
They did have Boy Scouts back then. But it's a great thing we do.
Well, I hope that y'all learned enough about your local government, your citizenship in the community, that you'll be community leaders, and I have no doubt that you will, whether you're working these elections, like these residents that were here this morning. That's an important part of what we do, to make the system work, or whether you're a business leader and give back and contribute in some form... Or whether you're a business leader and give back and contribute in some form or fashion, be a precinct chair like some of these folks, or maybe one day sit up here. And so I hope this is about your last time at the courthouse. So anyway, we're, congratulations. I want to thank the parents for supporting these boys and scouts. Thank you for our volunteers, our Merit Badge counselors, and our guest speakers to the program. Thank you on our wonderful staff. So anyway, here are another comments before the court. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, guys.
Come on up here, gentlemen, we're gonna have a picture real quick, okay, fellas?
You're gonna take some better pictures than me, but I want to get. We can send you all the pictures that we. Y'all go up there too. But y'all go, but y'all be in the picture. Yes, mom and dad. Sisters, brothers.
We're squeezing a little bit on that side.
I'm gonna have to take two. Oh, they're good. I got.
Everybody right here?
And we can send those to you that county staff takes.
Was that one in the?
That's hers, yeah. Okay, one, two, three. We got it.
Oh, they, oh, because they went.
He was in New York playing.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's great.
I never seen so, you must go into those shops that have five hundred, you know, like.
Oh, yes, yeah, they have all of them.
Oh, is that where you got them?
Yeah, that's. Yeah, it's not, nothing in the, oh, that's.
Did he give it to you?
He did. And, and one is, yes.
Okay. It's great to have the, the kids here in the, in the courthouse. Now, speaking of youth, let's go to item 3B, which is approval of a resolution recognizing the 2024, 2025 Denton County Junior Historians. And Kelsey, are you here? Where are the, where are the, our junior historians? Good morning. Commissioner Edmondson, speaking of innovative programs, I, I think this is a very innovative program, uh, as well. So Kelsey, do you want to talk about this a little bit?
Yes, yeah, Judge, Commissioners, thank you so much for recognizing us. Um, yeah, the Office of History and Culture thought today is a great day to recognize all of our youth programs.
They're out for school.
Yes.
We did it this summer.
Yes, so this is the Denton County Junior Historians. We are chapter 933 of the Junior Historians of Texas program. And, um, with the county, we run it, uh, for high school students. So students from ninth, 12th grade, um, from schools throughout the county can join our program. Uh, we meet twice a month, um, usually at the courthouse on the square, but this school year, we met at the Bayla Selby House. And these students get to engage in, with local history in kind of a unique way through our museum. Um, so our students this school year, um, did a project, a research project. They created a story map website, um, with the help of our GIS department. Um, I want to thank Alison McLeod for helping us with that. Um, and this program was about, um, our Denton County Heritage Business Program.
Oh, fun.
Yeah, and so, um, and through the, the state organization, they had a, a chapter contest. And so our students created a, a five-minute video, um, and we entered into that, and they were awarded gold medals, which they are wearing today.
Hits the medals. Let's give them a hand for that. That's wonderful.
So I'm very proud of these students.
They're our Olympic team. That's right.
Yes. So, yes, so I, I really enjoy working with these students. I think we have a lot of fun, and they learn a lot throughout the school year about Denton County history.
Perfect, well, great, well, I would love to read this, and if y'all, ladies, if y'all would like to say anything, we'd love to hear from y'all as well. This is a resolution recognizing the 2024, 25 Denton County Junior Historians. Whereas the Denton County Junior Historians, chapter 933, is a program sponsored by the Denton County Office of History and Culture for high school students from across Denton County who come together during this school year to discuss and engage in local history, volunteer at museum events, and collaborate on research projects. And whereas the members of the 2024, 25 Denton County Junior Historians include Samyath Aya? Did I, I may have pronounced that right. Laia Cha, Stephanie Everidge, Bonnie Mills, and Sophia Valdery. And whereas through their hard work and dedication to the program, these students have been awarded gold medals from the Junior Historians of Texas for their chapter, project to which they created an online story map about Denton County heritage businesses. And now therefore be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court does hereby recognize the Denton County Junior Historians for this accomplishment and their commitment to preserving Denton County history during this school year. Done in open court this 18th day of July, 2025, upon a motion by the Chair, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Well, I just want to thank y'all for what you do. I, as a young child, was very interested in history, still am.
Still is.
Still am, yeah. And, um, I will, I would tell you that, um, new generations of future historians, you don't have to be a professional.
Right.
I think it's important to know that historic preservation, in my experience here at the county, is done by volunteers. And, you know, ironically, it's mostly women who have volunteered to do our historic, mostly, not all, but mostly, if you think about it, the years on the historic commission, that I was on it and so forth, was, um, many times people who were passionate about a project, volunteered their time, talent, and treasure to save it. So many of the buildings that we've saved during the county were going to be destroyed if it wasn't for private fundraising or county partnerships and the county investing in it. But it was many times volunteers leading, leading the way. A, a, average citizens doing exceptional things. And so I want to just thank y'all for, at a young age, uh, they wouldn't have this program back when I grew up here in the county. And so I'm glad that we do have it, and hopefully that y'all will stay engaged, whether professionally or through a volunteer basis, and come back and see us and, and stay involved in historic preservation wherever you go in life. There's great histories, and, and many untold stories, and we need to capture those. And so thank y'all for being part. And I know that the, speaking on behalf of the heritage businesses that we have across the county, I know they appreciate this, this documentation and this future exposure in a digital way. So thank y'all for doing that. Any other comments? Yes, go right ahead, Diane.
Judge, we have four young ladies here who are part of this. I'd be curious, what got each of you interested in history? Most kids your age are not, and we're delighted that you are. Can you tell us just briefly?
Hi, I'm Leah. I'm a rising senior from Argyle High School. And just in school, I feel like history was my favorite classes. And I think my history teacher actually got me the most interested in history with world history, my AP world history class, my AP art history class, just any art, um, history class that I've taken, got me really interested. So I was just researching different programs that I could, um, take local to me, and then I found the Denton Junior Historians program, which I think is such a great opportunity for students to not only engage with their community and give back, but also learn a lot about local history, which I think is more meaningful, so.
That's right.
Thank you, I'm glad you're in.
Who else? Anyone? Yes?
Good morning, my name's Stephanie. I'm a rising senior at Bryan High School. And I also became engaged with history through my teachers at school. Um, you know, I had some teachers that really just made me interested in the subject, and they made it fun and enjoyable to learn. And, you know, when I found out that there was a program that would be, you know, working digitally to further the preservation of history, I thought it was important, especially with, you know, all the online, um, and social media aspects of today's world. Thank you.
Thank, great, great, yes. Go right ahead, yeah, move that mic around.
Right. Hi, I'm Sophia Valdery. This is my last year with Junior Historians, because I'll be going to SMU in the fall semester.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I joined Junior Historians because to me, it was a continuation of the upbringing that I had. My parents really instilled in my sister and I this love for history. I remember us visiting museums, going to local volunteering events, and we would enjoy so much of that stuff when we were younger. So when I got older, I was thinking of ways that I wanted to bring that back into my community and give that same opportunity to people who, like me, when you were, they were younger, they're interested in history and local events. So I saw that as a great way to continue what my parents instilled in me, and I think we do a great job here with our group.
What are you gonna major in?
I'm going to double major in psychology and biology on the pre-health track.
Perfect, uh, see if, bright future ahead of you.
Yeah, there we go.
All right.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Mills. I'm a rising junior from Crum High School. And, um, where I really started getting interested in history is my family always kind of made sure, made it very important to us. We always learned about family history growing up, and we'd go visit, like, our great, great, great grandparents' old farm out two hours away. Um, and it was just always very interesting in me, for me. And I want to make sure that more people have the opportunity to learn not only about county history and local history, but even national history, and even some of their family history. I think it's very important to know where you came from, and it kind of helps you decide where you're gonna go.
I love it, I love it, great, very, very good, very good.
Well, you know, Judge, with this group of, of young ladies and then the, the young men we saw earlier, I feel really good about.
That's right.
Are you feeling better about the future of America this morning? I know I am too. Maybe did you want to say anything?
I want to thank you, young ladies. It's so important to know your history, and sometimes we forget that. And I am just so proud of you for getting in there, especially at such a young age.
That's right.
You know, I always have to listen to the judge talking about history, because he's a history bug. So it's nice to have young ladies come in and, and, uh, talk about history and learn about history, because we need to know our history, not somebody else's, about our own history.
That's right, that's right, in a form of, yes, go right ahead, sir.
So something that, uh, not obviously all, all of you had mentioned, which I think is vitally important, um, not only just the history, but, but why you were so interested in it, had to do with your parents. And so I think it, it shows how instrumental our parents are in our upbringing and helping our future, uh, go the right direction. So I, I want to say thank you to the parents. The, the influence that you've obviously had on these, uh, great young women have been excellent, and you've done a wonderful job, and I look forward to seeing how, how your futures, uh, how bright they really are. Obviously, they're, they're going the right direction so far. So thank you to your parents, and that's who you really have to remember.
That's right.
Uh, who's, has made a lot of this stuff happen, but you ladies have put a lot of work into it, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I actually, um, my first elected position was president of the Junior Historians. And, uh, I, I, I loved history. I, Diane, I think I might have.
They had that back then.
They did, they did have Junior Historians, been around for a while. Diane, I think I might have joined originally because it was a high percentage of girls in the club, but. No, I, 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 I've, I've loved history for a long time, and I think it was great. I don't think I got a gold medal when I was, um, in the Junior Historians. But I, but it sure was a, a, a great point, uh, to really start to, to, and I, and I still love history constantly. Um, I listen to a lot of history podcasts, which my wife can't understand, but I think they're incredible. Uh, but good, good job, keep it going, because we do need to understand our history to, to make sure that our future is bright, and we don't return to some of the mistakes we've made too.
That's right, all right. Did y'all want to say anything? You got, you did a great job answering, you got involved. Did y'all want to add anything? Anyone? Okay, go ahead.
I just want to add, um, if anyone watching is interested in our program.
Tell us about how they can find out.
So we have, um, our applications are live on our Denton County website. Um, you can look for the Denton County Junior Historians page, and, um, there is the application link there. So I hope to get some other great young students to join us this school year, so, thank you so much. Yes, it'll be for the fall.
Perfect, great, all right.
Thank you, ladies, so much.
Well, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Just Sophia.
Uh, that was in high school, so we didn't meet till college.
Yes, yes. Do, do y'all want me to? We want y'all to be in the pictures too, so.
Yes, ma'am.
I know, how are you? Can I pull it down? Oh, okay, good, okay, I got it.
All right, everybody look right here first, let's get the main one. All right, everybody right here.
Can I get in front of you, so that y'all don't have to keep looking at a whole bunch?
Wow.
That's right. And if we can help.
These papers keep showing up to be sent.
Yeah, well done.
You don't have to.
You don't have to, but I will get yours.
No, I would like to, thank you.
Oh, she just says assigned stuff, Judge. She doesn't have anything on the agenda.
Yeah, I think we assigned.
Let's just, we'll go to next, let's just go to item 14N, which is approval of the placement of signs addressing loitering, congregating, and camping to be placed on real property owned by Denton County, Texas to regulate loitering, congregating, and camping in the parking lots and curtilage of Marion Jimhorn Government Center located at 1505 East McKinney Street, Denton, Texas 76209. And two, approval authorized in the Denton County Public Facilities Department to post specific signage at this location to inform the public that loitering, congregating, and camping is prohibited. The chair will move for approval. Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Go right ahead, please, sir.
I was actually over there yesterday or the day before that, and it is definitely an issue. And there's a lot of trash that continues to accumulate there. It's a, it's an eyesore and an issue. So, I full, full heartedly support this action.
Yep. And I want to thank Ms. Donway, our tax assessor collector, for bringing this to our attention in a professional manner. Thank you, ma'am. Did you want to say anything in addition to this item?
Just thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you for bringing it. Hearing no other action nor other items before the court. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for being here. Okay. Next, let's go to item two, which is our consent agenda to members. Are there any items you'd like to pull off the consent agenda? We have a motion to approve as presented.
I move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today consists of item two A, approval of the order-making appointments and any appropriate action. And item two B, approval of the budget amendment request 20259 for youth services local budget to transfer $7,000 from unappropriate contingency to juvenile mills to cover an anticipated shortage in the line item for the remainder of 2025. And item two C is approval of the July 18, 2025 payroll. Let's proceed to item five A, which is approval of the bill report payments from CSCD Community Corrections, TAIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, VIT, Interest in DA, Forfeiture Funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May.
Thank you, Judge. I have no changes today. Recommend approval as presented.
All right, thank you, sir. Do you have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to item five B, approval of a resolution indicating that the Denton County Commissioners Court intends to issue debt for acquiring, designing, constructing, and improving firefighting facilities, including acquisition of equipment, vehicles, land, and rights of way, therefore collectively the project, and further intends to make certain capital expenditures with respect to the project and currently desires and expects to reimburse the capital expenditures with proceeds of such debt. Any appropriate action?
Judge, I'm really happy to make the motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson. The chair will second. Any discussion? I do want to thank Commissioner Edmondson and the full court for your continued efforts on our, on our fire protection plan. Go ahead, Commissioner.
All right, I think this is a, is a great project, and I'm glad that we're moving forward.
Perfect. Sounds good. All right, we have a motion, a second. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six A, approval of a order of the ITB 252853 Hot Mix Surface Course to Eurovia Atlantic Coast LLC DBA Sunmount Paving Company. Any appropriate action?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to item six B, approval of an evaluation committee's recommendation to rank Alliance Geotechnical Group as most qualified firm for the material testing needed for the generator and electrical upgrades at Charlie Cole Facilities, Construction Management, and Health Services under RFPQ 202619, Material Testing Services, Building Construction.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six C, approval of renewal of annual subscription licenses to absorb software from SHI Government Solutions in amount of $70,603.47 through the Sourcewell Cooperative Contract 121923SHI.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six D, approval of sole source purchase of live scan systems from Idemia in amount of $51,170. Any appropriate action?
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six E, approval of the report on proceeds from the annual surplus auction 252869 held in May and June of 2025. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six F, approval to dispose of miscellaneous surplus in compliance with Chapter 263 152A3 of the Local Government Code for Disposition of Surplus Property.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven A, a report for miscellaneous equipment and software services presented for recording purposes only. That is presented for recording purposes only. Next is seven B, approval of budget amendment request 202512 for technology services to transfer $51,170 from Countywide Technology Technology Equipment to Technology Capital to fund fingerprint scanning stations due to being at the end of life and no longer supported by the vendor.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is eight A, report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Gustavo.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have one promotion in the county clerk, one promotion in juvenile probation, two new hires in juvenile probation, one demotion in juvenile probation, two new hires in the sheriff's office, both of them under detention officer ones, one rehire in the sheriff's office, and that one is also a detention officer. That's it for this week.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gustavo. Next, let's go to item 14A, which is approval of the inter-local cooperation agreement for property tax assessment and collection between Denton County, Texas and each of the following entities. One, the town of Hickory Creek. Two, the city of Carrollton. Three, the town of Little M. Four, Prairie Oaks Municipal Utility District of Denton County. Five, Oak Point Water Control Improvement District Number One. Six, the Smiley Road Water Control Improvement District Number One. Seven, the Tabor Ranch Municipal Utility District of Denton County. Eight, the Denton County Freshwater Supply District Number 11B. Nine, County Canyon Falls Water Control Improvement District Number Two. And ten, Denton County Municipal Utility District Number 16, as recommended by Denton County Tax Assessor Collector. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14B, approval of inter-local cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and the town of Hickory Creek for collection of special assessments levied by the following entities. One, Hickory Creek Public Improvement District Number One. Two, the Hickory Creek Public Improvement District Number Two. Three, the Hickory Farms Public Improvement District, as recommended by the Denton County Tax Assessor Collector. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14C, approval of the inter-local cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and the city of Salina for collection of special assessments levied by the following entities. One, Suttonfields East Improvement, Suttonfields East Public Improvement District Salina. Two, the Suttonfields Two Public Improvement District Salina, as recommended by the Denton County Tax Assessor Collector. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14D, approval of the inter-local cooperation agreements between Denton County, Texas and the city of Carrollton for collection of special assessments levied by the following entities. One, Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number One. Carrollton, two, the Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Two. Carrollton, as recommended by the Denton County Tax Assessor Collector.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14E, approval of the inter-local cooperation agreements between Denton County, Texas and the town of Little M for collection of special assessments levied by the following entities. One, Hillstone Point Public Improvement District Number Two. Little M, two, the Spiritus Ranch Public Improvement District, Little M. Three, the Spiritus East Public Improvement District, Little M. Four, the Valencia on the Lake Public Improvement District, Little M. Five, Lakeside Estates Public Improvement District Number Two. Little M. Six, the Ruttman Track Public Improvement District, Little M. Seven, the Valencia Public Improvement District Number Two. Little M, as recommended by the Denton County Tax Assessor Collector.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14F, approval of the interlocal cooperate, interlocal agreement between Denton County, Texas and the Texas Department of Transportation for the Denton County Outer Loop Project from I-35 to the Dallasport Tollway in Denton County. And a total estimated local government participation in amount of $949,758 with funding to come from the Outer Loop. Judge, trip 22, auto line item 9473619060. Any appropriate action? We have a motion by Commissioner Williams. The judge, the chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I think it's important to note that we're contributing another million dollars to the Outer Loop.
Million bucks.
For tax dot. Just.
Well, that doesn't even include everything.
That doesn't include. This is just a new round.
Yeah.
Of money that we're paying for.
Just a new round of money.
For a tax dot.
Done more.
So.
Thank you, Judge.
Uh huh. Next is 14G, approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement for property tax assessment and collection between Denton County, Texas and each of the following entities. Denton County Freshwater Supply District Number 8A. Number two, Denton County Freshwater Supply District Number 8B. Three, the Denton County Freshwater Supply District 11A. Four, the Denton County Freshwater Supply District Number 11C. Five, Denton County Freshwater Supply District Number Six. And six, the Denton County Freshwater Supply District Number Seven. And seven, Belmont Freshwater Supply District Number One. And eight, Belmont Freshwater Supply District Number Two. And nine, the city of Sanger. Ten, the town of Lakewood Village. Eleven, the city of Denton, as recommended by the Denton County Tax Assessor Collector.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14H, approval of the interlocal cooperation agreements between Denton County, Texas and the town of Lakewood Village for collection of the special assessments levied by the following entities. One, the Lakewood Village Public Improvement District Number One. The two, the Lakewood Village Public Improvement District O-N-M. One, as recommended by the Denton County Tax Assessor Collector.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14I, approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and the town of Crossroads for collection of special assessments levied by the Crossroads Public Improvement District Number One, as recommended by the Denton County Tax Assessor Collector.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14J, approval of the interlocal cooperation agreements between Denton County, Texas and the Sanctuary Municipal Utility District Number One of Denton County, Texas, the District for Fire Protection and Emergency Ambulance Services, ICA.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14K, approval memorandum of agreement between the US Car, Army Corps of Engineers in Denton County, Texas for the Outer Loop Project to allow the USACE to participate in the National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA, and environmental process for the project pursuant to US Code Chapter 9, 70131 USC 6505, the Department of Defense Instruction, DoDI 40019, in amount of $156,141 with funding to come from the Outer Loop. Judge, trip 22, auto line item number 9473619060.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, the chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. More money. So, a million dollars. A million today, today.
Yep.
Tax dot. 14L, approval of the supplement agreement number one to the professional services agreement between Denton County, Texas and WSB LLC for the Fish Trap Road Project from US 377 to end of county maintenance. Brewer Road in an additional amount of $468,789 for the total revised contract of $7,551,835 with funding to come from Fish Trap Road, trip 22, precinct one, auto line item 9475029020. Any appropriate action?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14M, approval of change order number two for the development of a custom report within CAM, CAN, AM, Teller application that will be used by the Denton County Treasurer in connection with the Workday ERP system in amount of $1,840.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, the chair will second. Any discussion? I do want to, again, thank all of our staff, all of our elected officials, the Workday leadership team, and those who are at the front lines working and implementing the system. I want to thank everyone for working on, on this Workday solution. I know it's not easy right now as we work through it, but I do want to, we had a great visit with them the other day. I had a recent visit with the actual, the team of Workday, the Workday itself, about process improvements and so forth. And so, I do just want to think this is another, obviously, an application that we're implementing, but financially, it's a cost today. That's why it came through court. But I do just want to thank, on behalf of the, on behalf of the course, want to thank all of y'all who are involved in this process. It's not easy. I publicly think, I mean, I privately thanked the committee the other day for their good work, and just want to publicly thank them again for that. Sometimes those are once in a career.
Yep.
Right? Jeff May, you've done two in a career. Big system changes. But anyway, I want to, I want to thank the, thank the team for all their efforts.
Judge, if you don't mind.
Yeah, go right ahead.
I totally agree. You know, obviously, there's, there's plenty of frustration, but that's part of the deal when you're implementing something so large within the county that we are. And there's going to be, you know, issues here and there, but I can promise you, once we get through all of that, it'll be a wonderful day when it's all completed and everybody understands how to utilize the system. understands how to utilize the system. There'll be major advantages to it, and, but I can understand the frustration, but that's just part of it. And I really appreciate everybody's patience and understanding while we're going through this, and thank you all for trying to keep a positive attitude, so thank you, Judge.
Perfect, good, thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen O, pardon me. Approval of agreement for construction, agreement at risk, civil courts building remodel, R F P two five two eight six two, between Denton County, Texas, and the Burn Construction Services in amount of four million six hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars, which consists of the pre-construction phase both scope services fee in amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, a construction phase service fee for two million nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars, and a C M A R contingency of one million five hundred and ninety thousand dollars, with funding being transferred within the twenty twenty tax notes from D C C B eight four seven five six zero nine zero one zero to Civil Courts Building, eight four seven six eight five nine zero one zero through a budget amendment as recommended by the Denton County Purchasing Director.
Move approval, and I've got a couple of comments.
Perfect motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Oh, so Commissioners and Judge, as you know, this is part of our civil courts process, and so H O K has been working on the schematic design process, and this is the approval of the, our construction manager at risk, which is Burn Construction, who will also be the construction manager at risk for the remodel of the current courts building, correct? And so, and for those who might not know, construction manager at risk is a means of doing your construction and your design process where you actually bring a firm, in this case, Burn Construction, on while you are in the design process, and you get the, the bonus of that is that you get their expertise as we are going through it. And Commissioners and Judge, so that you know, their first order of business is a cost estimate based on the schematic drawings that have been up close to finishing from H O K. And then, once we have that, we'll be bringing that to you all so you can see the cost that is based on the schematics, and the schematics hopefully very soon.
Perfect, good, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, let's briefly go, let's, let's briefly go through seventeen, which is community updates.
Uh, thank you, Judge. I'll make mine quick. So Commissioner Faulkner and I had the pleasure of something that's going to be exciting, I think, for, I know for Denton County and quite a few of the cities involved, and it's going to be the Ironman seven zero point three. This week in Denton County, Little Elm will be the home to the Ironman seventy point three on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-six. The triathlon consists of a mile and a half swim in Lake Louisville, followed by fifty-six mile bike course, and ends with a thirteen point one mile run. It's an ex, it's exciting news to have them coming here to Denton County. You can register the, and on, open, it opens on Wednesday for registration on July twenty-third on the ironman.com website. And I think it's imperative to realize, this is, this is not just going to be, you know, local Texas individuals coming. It'll be people from all over the world that will come and participate in this. And the, the windfall, as far as the benefit to the economic side of it, is going to be tremendous for all your hotels and restaurants and, and local stores, and not just in Little Elm, but all the participating cities. And so, I want to thank everybody that was involved in that. I want to thank the law enforcement, the chiefs of police, and the fire chiefs, because they're going to have to have a concerted effort to make sure that this is a successful event, and that everybody's, you know, it's in a safe fashion. So, it is extremely exciting. I want to congratulate Little Elm for putting this together, but again, they did have help from the other cities, and makes it exciting, and I'm looking forward to it.
Perfect, good, thank you.
Thank you, that's all I had, Judge.
Thank you, Commissioner Faulkner.
Sorry, Kevin, I didn't mean to pull it all, but that's...
Yeah, no.
What happens when you go second?
No, no, that's right. Well, it is going to be exciting, and, you know, they gave us a special opportunity to preregister for, for that. So, we did preregister the judge and our two fellow Commissioners, Bobby and Diane.
I have a head start.
And so, it's, we're excited, and we, and...
You're the one who swims every day, so I think you're going to do the swimming leg of the competition.
No, we...
It's a tag team.
It's tag team. We're there to cheer you on, though.
Yeah.
But se, that seventy point three is the number of miles that's involved. Seventy point three total miles you get to traverse.
Yeah, that's about all I could do.
And apparently, you're supposed to do it in something like two and a half or three hours, so that's a, that's a toughie. But anyway, it's, it's going to be a great event, and it, I think it's basically the kickoff of that for the entire year, and starts right here in Denton County.
And we have a five-year, they got a five-year contract, so that's really a big deal.
It is good. So, so it's going to be exciting. Other things, in, in Precinct Two, we have, I want to congratulate Aiden Nunez, she's an F F A student at R L Turner in Carrollton, and she achieved a Lone Star F F A degree at the ninety-seventh Annual Texas F A, F F A Convention, which is the highest honor you can get. Congratulations to Aiden. And then, we also recognized C F B I S D, Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District, with a twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five District of Distinction Award from the Texas Art Education. This is the third year in a row they've received that. And then, just quickly, a few events going on. We've got, in Little Elm, we've got the Farmer's Market at the Lawn on the twenty-sixth from ten to two at the Lawn, Live at the Lawn, also that same day, that evening, seven to nine. And then, Frisco has a Garth, Shameless, a tribute to Garth Brooks concert, and that's going to be July nineteenth from seven to nine at P G A Frisco. They have a blood drive with Carter, Carter Blood Care, that's it, also at P G A Frisco on the twenty-sixth from eleven to three thirty. And then, calling all heroes, this is for veterans, first responders, and their families to, to come to the Frisco Water Park and Athletic Center. That'll be on the twenty-sixth from six to eight. Crossroads has their summer market on the nineteenth and twenty-sixth from eight to eleven at four twenty-four and Fish Trap. And then, Carrollton has Wildlife and Carrollton Workshop. That'll be at the Municipal Courts Community Room, the twenty-fourth from six to eight. That's all I have.
Perfect. Commissioner Mitchell?
In Flower Mountain, we have, on, on Saturday, Saturday morning cartoon at the Riverwalk, that should be fun. Wear your PJs and bring a blanket of lawn chair. Yeah, that's giving fun. Lake Dallas, we still have Lake City's Trade Days on July nineteenth, eight a.m. to noon. Lake Dallas fiftieth Celebration Library, fiftieth Celebration, five thirty p.m. to seven p.m. And Louisville, we have a service Saturday event, Timmer Creek Cleanup, that's on Saturday at Central Park, on eight a.m. to ten a.m. Then we have Duck Derby on Saturday at Louisville Sun Valley Aquatic Center, decorate a duck and race it around the lazy river. And we have on Saturday also, we have a lot of things going on, on Saturday in Louisville. My First Fish, Fishing One Oh One at Royal Park, ten to twelve. We have Community Champions on Saturday at Tittle McFadden Public Safety Center. And then, we have a community shout-out. Congratulations to Flower Mountain resident Brian Woodland, who received a Congressional Award, a prestigious award that requires four hundred hours of community service, two hundred hours of physical fitness, and two hundred hours of personal development. He had to plan a five-day, four-night expedition. He traveled to Washington, D.C. from June eleventh through the fourteenth with other students who also received the award. He was among the nineteen from Texas who was recognized. Congratulations, Brian Woodland.
Thank you. Commissioner Edmondson?
Well, I want to start out with a community shout-out to, and congratulations to B J McGee, who has been named the twenty twenty-four Driver Engineer of the Year for the Denton County Emergency Services Districts, number one and two. He's been in the fire service for nineteen years, currently is at Station five eleven on the A shift. And now, let's, I'm going to go in kind of reversal. We're going to start with Trophy Club. They're going to have a special birdhouse building session on the twenty-sixth from